That's a fast minute. Okay, let's see. Unmute.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 10th Business Meeting of the GROSEAL Township Board of Trustees. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll call the meeting adjourned at 7:35. The entire board is present. We'll get on with business as published. Let's begin with additions, deletions, alterations to tonight's agenda. Mr. Bundy.
Thanks, Brian. After some discussion with board members, I would like to ask that we move action item, action item one, the only action item, move it from an action item to a discussion item for tonight's meeting.
Okay, moved by trustee Bundy, seconded by trustee Nelson for reasons he gave. Any discussion among the board? Okay, with none, let's, those in favor of moving the one action item to a discussion item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Now if that will be so moved, any other additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? None offered. Those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the agenda stands as amended. With that, we'll open it up to a brief public comment on, well, we have no agenda items, so I guess we can stick with our, this is getting easier every time. We'll go through that and we'll save the public comment to the public comment, the general public comment at the end. Consent agenda, Mr. Treasurer.
I'd like a motion to approve consent agenda 19-084, which includes the minutes of the January 27th, 2020 regular meeting and a check register dated through February 7th, 2020.
Support.
Okay, moved by Treasurer, seconded by trustee Bundy. Any comments, discussion on tonight's consent agenda? None offered. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None offered. The consent agenda stands approved. I guess we'll go into reports. Madam Clerk?
That is a record.
Yeah, we haven't hit the record yet.
Well, for getting to this point, let's put it that way. It's a record for getting to this point.
Ted has the record ready.
We have a couple of things for Clerk's Office business, and then I'd like Brian to make a short presentation. Our communications administrator has given the board an update on some of the things that he and Elena have been doing in the past couple of weeks since taking on the helm and even before that. And so I thought he wrote such a nice report that he should share it, one with the public, and I'd like to also have it in the record because it's quite impressive what they've accomplished. And I guess to speak to that, right, Brian? I'm assuming the fact that you're sitting there right now means everything went well and we are now streaming live on Facebook.
Facebook.
And so we are not just going into people's living rooms via cable TV and streaming on, you know, the internet, on the website, but Brian and the team have also worked on getting it set up now that we stream through Facebook. And as he'll report later, they've already had a trial run with, I believe, the Open Space Committee with Mr. Bletcher as liaison, and they had over 300 people watching. So that's pretty impressive on a weeknight, 300 people watching an Open Space meeting. So, and that's the beauty of social media. I think if you know me, you know that I'm on the fence about social media. There are good things and bad things. There's Facebook and there's Fakebook. There are good things that come out of it and bad things that come out of it. And what's really great about this is that you'll be able to watch the actual meeting on Facebook, not somebody's curated clips, not somebody's specially selected out of context moments. So after I finish these other points, I'm going to ask Brian to come up to the podium and do that. As you know by now, absentee ballots are available for the March 10, 2020 presidential primary. As a voter, you will have a choice of three different ballots. You can vote Republican, you can vote Democrat, or you can vote a proposal-only ballot. There will be two proposals on each of the ballots, okay, on each of the ballots. One is for a GROSEAL Schools sinking fund, and that does not have anything to do with poor foundations. It has to do with funding for school projects. And one is for the Wayne County Art Authority, and you've probably seen some of those ads on television now as we head into the election season. For those of you who've already submitted an application for a ballot, those ballots will go out next week. And we're not going to show you the ballots again, but remember you're looking for a different colored ballot envelope this time, white and blue and not the usual manila. So packets for running for the Township Board of Trustees are available in the Clerk's Office. Those running will need to submit their paperwork by April 21st, 2020 in order to be eligible for the partisan primary. So the Township Board election is a partisan election, and it is run on the Democrat and the Republican ballots. If you wish to run as an independent, I think that option exists then in November. The last day to register to vote in any manner other than in person with the local clerk is Monday, February 24th, 2020. After this date, anyone who qualifies as an elector may register to vote in person with proof of residency in the Township Clerk's Office. So with that all said, Brian.
Madam Clerk, may I offer, the school, the GROSEAL School Board has requested, make a presentation at our next board meeting. They're going to explain the sinking fund that's on the ballot. So if you're unsure what the sinking fund entails, before you fill your absentee ballot, you might want to attend or watch the next meeting in February, 14 days from now, 24th, and they'll be explaining it or come here and ask questions or ask your favorite school board member, but they are planning to bring a presentation to the board meeting, just to answer questions and fill in your knowledge of what the sinking fund entails before you vote yea or nay on it. So just thought this would be the appropriate time to bring that in.
Yep, no, thank you very much.
Okay.
As Uta stated, we are using Facebook Live now. When she said we had 300 people watch the Open Space meeting, at the end of that meeting that evening, we had 250 people that had filtered in and out of the meeting. I think during the meeting, I never saw more than 10 at a time. Like right now, if I look at this meeting, there's 15 watching right now. The most I've seen at a time were 16. So people are coming in and out, checking it out, you know, and then moving on. Right now, there's 17. So, but the one issue we had is I did have a connection issue that I didn't notice before the meeting, so then, I don't know if any of you watched on cable, we had black and white on all our cable stations besides Comcast, which was blinking in and out the entire time. I did figure that out. It was just a simple frame rate that was off that the cable stations couldn't handle in their SD. So the one thing that was different is because our cable stations aren't in HD, we have to downplay for them, and then we're going out to HD on our YouTube and our Facebook. So that was something I hadn't dealt with before. So I came close with black and white, but it wasn't perfect. So now, it looks like now everything's running perfectly. Besides that, we now have an up-to-date daily schedule that you can find on our website under Communications, under GITV. That'll give you about five days out of what is happening and what's going to be coming up on the television. We have social media. I had a resident ask me about our social media and how much we really put into it. So I kind of took a look at that and, I've been doing it for 22 months. I started it while Ted was still here. And during those 22 months, I've put out 890 posts on our Facebook page, and we've gotten 1,190 followers. And that was as of January 27th. If I looked at the prior 22 months, we had 91 posts and a total of 1,983 total followers since 2009. So we had jumped 37% in how many people are actually following us on our Facebook page in those 22 months. Now, looking at it, I did notice that the last couple of months, I had kind of tailed off a little bit, so even in my own opinion, I can do more. I think I need to use our group pages on GROSEAL more to share our stuff through and even using Downriver and Friends when we have events going on to share our stuff through them to try to get more people here, which I haven't been doing. So I don't know if, I see Robert in the back there, and I've been sharing more stuff to GROSEAL now, trying to get a little more input, try to get more people to notice what's going on with the township. We started Instagram since I've been here. I started that in September of 2018. Started very slowly, but lately is really picking up. We're up to about 550 people following us on there. So that's a positive. Twitter's, as I said, I think in one of our study sessions, Twitter is just not something that's very popular with our residents. We've had it since December of 2009, and we only have 658 people follow us on there. So I keep posting to it. As I told you guys in the email, I'm using a social media called Buffer, so I can send out to three different things at one time, so I'm not having to recreate everything for each one. It's actually pretty amazing. Saved me a lot of time. YouTube, we only have 78 followers, but at the same time, we have meetings that people, we have 200 and some views of. So it, people aren't following us, but they're tuning in and finding the links and going through it that way. Besides that, just our website, there's not much to talk about there. I mean, it launched in November, we're keeping it up to date. I did have, Mr. Bundy came to me with an issue today that I cleared up in two minutes, I just didn't know about it. And then our GROSEAL Connect app, I actually went backwards on that, went back to the setup we had when we first launched with the front page being much more simplified, and then added a "Let Us Know" section so that residents have an easier time getting hold of us regarding anything from Connect, G.I. Connect issues, GITV issues, code enforcement trash, and will basically, when you put in your concern, it'll be redirected to that manager that is in charge of that to take care of. Okay? And there's, I don't know, maybe nine or 10 of those. So we're trying to make it a little bit easier for residents to get ahold of us and get their concerns to us without necessarily having to call us or email us. So that's, that's pretty much.
Well, and I think one of the things that you said in your email and we've said at other meetings is a concern with the page of allowing people to give us feedback and identify issues is that we start tracking how well we close the loop. So how well does the information get to the right department that it needs to go to, and then that department handles it and closes the loop?
Right, and that's a question going forward. Do we want to implement, and there's many things you can find on the internet that we can use to implement where we could have a tracking system to know, you know, it comes in, we could have it come into one central person, that person that distributes it out, then you can see the chain of, you know, when that, when the person who got it then commented or, you know, took care of the issue and then when it got closed. So that's something to discuss if we want to go forward with something like that. You know, there's options where we could put things out there where you can actually put texts in, you know, where somebody can actually send a text to a certain person. You know, we could have one phone in whatever, one department, that, then we could distribute that out from there. I'm not saying we need to do this, I'm just saying these are options if we wanted to upgrade our communications and make it easier for residents to get ahold of us. So that's.
Yeah, and these are the areas where we're also really looking for feedback is using the tools that we have available to us on, through social media and through the internet and our website and GROSEAL Connect to improve communications back and forth between our residents, our administration, our staff members, and our board. And on some level, that is, I think, the first step to take, and then as we start developing those platforms, we can start looking further afield into entertainment-type things that the board might be interested in. But bottom line, I think what the residents have long lamented is that, you know, we need to find some really good ways to get feedback back and forth. And just speaking to that, you know, that's really the job I see of the public officials on the board, is that we're the ones out in the, in the community. We can take things to our managers. Our managers bring things to us, but also the public brings things to us that we can then take to the managers. But it doesn't always have to happen in the frozen food aisle at Kroger. It's nice when it happens through our website or through our app. So, and I was very proud of how Brian has just dived into this, and he's already speaking the lingo for crying out loud. So I feel like we, I feel like we've, you've all helped us make a good decision in this direction, so I wanted to thank you all for that.
I'll say right now, we have 73 people watching. We've jumped up quickly.
Yeah, well, thank you.
We used to have this axiom that followed us around at Federal Expressum. It was, work smarter, not harder. But sometimes you have to work harder. I see both happening with your efforts, Brian, and it's allowing our very small staff Township employee cadre just to get a lot more work done for a lot more people, and it's a force multiplier. It's, I'm impressed. I'm trying to keep up with him and I'm failing miserably, but, but since I see him every day, he can instruct me. Thanks, Brian.
And that's it for the Clerk's Report.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Brian. Excuse me. Judiciary Banking and Investment Information is currently being received and compiled for the month. Once it is compiled, it'll appear on my website, on the GROSEAL website, and I'll have a full report at the next board meeting. GROSEAL Township 2019 Winter Property Taxes are due by February 14th without penalty. That's next Friday. Understand that after that, there's a 3% penalty added to any unpaid winter tax bills after that date. Then on March 1st, excuse me, all unpaid winter tax bills become delinquent and must be paid through Wayne County, and you need to ignore that or avoid that if you can. If you have not, if you cannot pay your winter taxes by the due date of February 14th, there's a deferment available for those who qualify. Approved deferment applications will defer the due dates until April 30th, but must be submitted to the GROSEAL Treasurer's Office by the 14th. If you need to do that and you have problems doing that, come in and see Annette. She'll walk you through the process. She's very good. The Commerce Park meeting has a meeting on Monday, the 3rd Monday. Is that a holiday or?
17th.
Yes, it is.
Then it'll, then it'll be moved to Tuesday. And I have nothing for it.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We'll move on to trustee Lays' reports. Mr. Marvesto.
Good evening. First off, Chief, Fire Chief Duncan Murdoch and Fire Marshal Russ Bowdrey are in the audience tonight. Guys are fine examples of the, of our fire department, volunteer fire department, and they represent a really crack staff of officers and, and firemen as well. If I'm not, if I get this, if I get this correct, from January 1st to date, we've had 70 EMS calls and approximately 15 fire calls. And here we are, first couple of weeks of February. As always, they're a busy crew. Thanks, guys. Really appreciate your service. And that'll be it.
Question, what, 15 fire calls? To me, that sounds like what, 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 is there a endemic problem? Is there something that?
People called for a CO detector alarm. In the middle of the night, one was, it was broken. Those are classified as fire calls.
Chief, would you mind if Russ went up to the, you and Russ go up to the mic? I mean, it's, it's unusual when we have our meetings and we go through the, we go through the calls, although it, because the dispatcher does not have the ability to determine whether a tone, you know, tone out is sent or not, they have to respond. Middle of the night, doesn't matter if it's just somebody's battery, you know, weak battery, you know, starts setting off a beep, they call in, my fire alarm's gone off. These guys make the call. So Russ, just do a quick explanation of those, we see numbers, they're big numbers. Doesn't matter what the call was, the end result of the call, the fact is, your members were up.
We're open 24/7, as you know.
Exactly.
And it happens quite a bit. People's carbon monoxide alarm.
Want to give them a name and address or? I was joking with you, Russ.
A carbon monoxide alarm will go off in the middle of the night? It's hard for them to go back to sleep with that thing going off. So they'll call us, we come out with our carbon monoxide detectors, we'll go through the house. Nine times out of 10, it's, it's usually a bad carbon monoxide detector or a battery, but we just had one, Duncan remembers, on Larkspur, where the furnace really wasn't that old. The guy had just put in all-new smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in his house maybe six months ago, and it started going off. I said, that $20 for that carbon monoxide detector saved your life because the levels were elevated in the house. They got out, they found a place to stay, they had a furnace repairman come in the next morning and took care of it.
Well, just for the benefit of everybody, of the 70-some people who are listening, what is, what is the suggested replacement, especially on the battery, on the battery type of, you know, fire alarms and carbon monoxide alarms? What is the suggested replacement?
Smoke detectors, the old, older smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, they had a lifespan of five years. After that, they started breaking down, they started giving false alarms. We recommended back then that you replaced your smoke detector or your carbon monoxide detector every five years. Today's smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, they have now with a 10-year sealed lithium battery. I recommend it to everybody. I have them in my house, I love them. You don't have to change the batteries every time you turn back your clocks, they're good for 10 years. When you put them up, I recommend that you take a black marker and write the date on the back, so you know in 10 years, when you go to pull that down, it's time to change it out.
But that's only if it has a sealed lithium battery?
That's the ones with the sealed 10-year lithium batteries.
Anything, anything short of that is probably, should be replaced at this time?
We get them all the time. You can tell by the color of the plastic, they're aging, they're beyond their working lifespan. Everything's on a slow march to the junkyard. Every piece of equipment we have, these things are working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. For 20 bucks, it'll save your life, it's worth it.
And what about the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors that are, that are hard-wired within your house?
The hard-wired ones still have a battery backup in them. We get calls on those all the time because they're beeping, and the people will say, well, it's hard-wired. But yes, it has a battery backup, so if you lose power and there's a fire that starts, you want to know about it. You don't want to wait for the power to come back on, for that smoke detector to tell you. So a lot of times, those batteries will start going dead, they start beeping, and people don't understand why is it beeping? It's hard-wired. It's got a battery backup just to protect you when the power's off. So those have to be replaced as well, the batteries and those every so often. Again, those smoke detectors as well, 10 years maximum.
And now that I got, as long as we got you out there, how many ba, how many fire, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms are recommended in a, in a given house? Which rooms and how many?
One carbon monoxide detector on each level, so one in the basement, one on the main floor. If you have an upstairs, one on the upstairs. That way, if that carbon monoxide goes off, you want them Bluetooth so that they talk to each other. So if you have carbon monoxide going off in the basement, you want it to set it off up in the third floor where you're sleeping. You don't want to wait for the carbon monoxide to get up to you. That way you can address it. Same with the smoke detectors. They're all interlinked now with Bluetooth. They will talk to each other. One on each level, one in the basement, one on the main floor, one on the third floor if you have it, right outside the sleeping rooms. That way it wakes you up. You don't want, again, you know, we don't want to wait for that smoke to get up to us. We want to know as quick as possible so we can have a little fire not grow into a big fire.
Quick question, Rusty, does, where's the best place to put the carbon monoxide detector? High up or low?
On the carbon monoxide, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Because it fills the room.
Okay.
Now, smoke detector, what happens with smoke? Smoke rises. So we want it to go up on top, as close to the top of the ceiling as we can, because that's the first place it's going to hit. If you put it down on the wall, you have to wait for that smoke to bank down before it sets off. And you want to get it, again, as early of a notice as you can. The other thing I'm going to recommend, get a fire extinguisher and put it by the door that you go out. That way you, your family, your kids, everybody's heading towards the door, they get to that fire extinguisher, they look back, and that fire's bigger than what they thought, they keep going out the door. Everybody gets killed in a fire when they go back in or they spend too much time. In a fire, fires are violent. They're burning the combustible, they're also sucking up the oxygen to burn. And what a lot of people don't realize is the oxygen content in that house is dropping. Taylor had a fire, oh, I want to say a couple of months ago. It was in a back room. It was a 16-year-old girl or 18-year-old girl sleeping on her front couch. She woke up, when she smelled the smoke, she started to go to the front door, but she passed out because of the lack of oxygen. The fire started going out the window, someone called the fire department, they kicked in the front door and they found her just in the front side of the front door. They took her outside, got her fresh air, she went home that night. So that's why you don't go back in. It's not only the smoke and the gases, there's no oxygen.
One last, one last thing. A fire, a house fire, how quickly does it double? I'm, I'm looking for the right terminology, but.
A fire doubles in size approximately every three minutes. The old farmhouses that were built in the 20s and 30s, they had thick two-by-fours, they were true two-by-fours, big wood. Today, everything's built with a glue lamb, which is pieces of plywood glued together, trusses. There's a lot of air spaces between those trusses. The glue is a petroleum product, it burns. So what we call flashover, the smoke rises up to the ceiling, it keeps building up and building up and building up, and as that smoke is going up, there's also unburned gases in there. Those unburned gases are accumulating in that smoke, and what happens is, all of a sudden, that smoke keeps banking down, banking down, you'll get a little spark, goes up into that layer of smoke, and it ignites those unburned gases. At the ceiling, it's 1,800 degrees. Once it ignites those gases and they explode, they push that 1,800 degrees to the floor. That's called flashover. Once there's flashover in a room, everybody dies, everything catches on fire, even our firefighters with turnout gear, no one can go through 1,800 degrees and survive. In an old farmhouse, that generally happened around 17, 18 minutes. In today's newer houses with petroleum products, with the foam that's made from ground-up pop bottles, things like that, they have a lot of petroleum products in it, it's now happening in five to six minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Turned in far more than I expected, but all great information. Thanks, Russ.
That was, that's time well spent. Okay, everybody here and the 75 of you listening at home, we have work, we have work to do. You've been, you've been working. Russ, thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else for Fire Marshal?
Thank you, Russ. Mr. Nelson.
As usual, I have to have our lovely Recreation Director, Kim O'Farrell, come up and give a Rec Department report. Kim?
Good evening. Community Events and Festival Commission is February 19th at 7:00 p.m. County Recreation Commission meeting is scheduled for February 27th at 6:00 p.m. And I just wanted to update on a few of the events. We had our daddy-daughter dance this past Friday, over 300, closer to 350 this year. And what a, what a great night. I use Facebook to show the events that we do. Chad and I normally go live from the event, and it was a great night. I don't know if you follow our page, but if you don't, you should. It's a very, very positive page. Recreation is a positive, just environment for everybody in the community. So follow that. I found this cute little girl just dancing the night away, and for those of you that saw, it was pretty cool. And for those of you that saw, it was pretty cool. Just a couple more events coming to the community. This is just continu- Just a continuation of our pickleball program. Just a time change on Thursdays, that's due to our gyro basketball program. We're sharing lots of gym space with the school. And I always like to shout out to the schools and thank them for allowing us to use the gym. It's $3 drop-in, and that's on Tuesdays at 6:30 to 8:30, and Thursdays from 6:45 to 8:30. And I believe Tom's in the audience, thank you for helping with that program. I know our numbers are increasing with this program, which is great. A lot of people are starting to pick up on this, the pickleball. I haven't played it, I'm a tennis player, and I've yet to try it, so I'm going to try it soon. Our next event is the Mother-Son Boeing Night, and that is the 21st of February. This is a tradition for the Recreation Department. Numbers are kind of low right now, but they tend to increase towards the event, so we just ask of... This is a mother-son event. There was some comments on Facebook, I think some of the moms were a little jealous that the dads got to take the daughters, so now the moms are requesting to have a mother-son dance. So, and I do follow the feeds on our page, and we are looking into possibly hosting that in the fall, kind of a turnabout dance kind of thing. So I do watch the posts that are on the Recreation page, and we are looking into that. So I just wanted to let the residents know. And this is actually Chad's event, so Chad, Chad's there. We're trying the chili cook-off again. We eliminated Winter Fest this year, just with the crazy weather we've been having. We decided just to do a plain old chili cook-off, team up with Smokey's, our partner restaurant, and it's $5 to enter, $2 to taste, just something fun to get out of the house. So if you're looking to make some chili, and we've got some great prizes lined up, obviously I can't tell you what they are, because that's no fun. So chili cook-off, the 7th of March from 12 to 3, and that's at Smokey's. And then to our seniors, always trying to get communication to our senior citizens. I know many of them don't follow the Facebook page, but they do call and say, "Kim, we see you on the television," and they do watch. So the next senior luncheon is March 11th, and that's at 12:30. And that's at Centennial Farm. We offer free transportation on that event. Any senior luncheon that we have, we do pick up our seniors in the big bus and get them to Centennial Farms. And we just ask for pre-registration. It helps us coordinate the lunches, so we don't over-purchase the lunches for those particular events, so. And then, you know, we have high demands for bus trips. Found this one for free, free is good. And I can't see that far, and the screen is not in front of me. The first one is April 23rd, and this is through the Detroit Institute of Art. And I had a couple residents call me. Thank you, Betty, if you're watching, I know she's watching at home, Betty Shaver. And said, "You've got to call them, call them, this is free stuff." So I'm going to hand the credit to Betty. And we're trying to get this bus going and get some of our seniors. And you don't actually, I don't believe you have to be a senior, I know it says 55 on there, but these trips are mainly designed for seniors, so, but call and get registered for that. Again, it's free transportation to a great place. So I'm doing everything I can to get more programming for our senior citizens. Again, if you are in need of meals on wheels or senior transportation, just call the Rec Department, and we will definitely help you out with those things. And that's really all I have. Any questions?
That's a lot, you've been busy.
Again, we are, we are moving forward with Island Fest. I know there's been some rumors and talks and so forth, and obviously, the commission is concerned about the bridge situation. But our commission is working very hard to put together a festival for our community. It may be on a smaller scale, but, you know, Chad, I don't know if the smaller scale... Yes, come on out. But we're working on it, we're working on it, so.
It's May 29, 30, 31. That's May 29, 30, 31. It's the weekend after Memorial Weekend. Also, grozealeislandfest.com is up and running. We have our exhibitor forms, our parade forms, and our sponsorships. So check out grozealeislandfest.com, it's an amazing website. And everything from the township. Ow, snap, Brian. And the fireworks are Saturday, May 30th. Fireworks Saturday, May 30th. We went around, and it's going to be good. So check out grozealeislandfest.com. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Brian. Quickly, accolades for the Fire Department, of course, and that's very important, I understand that. But I'd like to recognize Kim and Chad for doing a great job for Recreation, so they rock it out, so thanks, guys.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Buncher. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Brian, I appreciate that. I sit on three, have the privilege of sitting on three separate commissions. The first report tonight is going to be the police. It is unlike the usual statistics that I have previously provided. This is a shout-out for Marty Paws. As you'll note on Grozeal Connect, the Grozeal Animal Shelter and Animal Control are presenting a fundraiser, Marty Paws, Marty Paws, it's two weeks away. Join us for a night of incredible music with Jared Champion and his eight-piece ensemble, Sunnyside Street Band. The Grozeal Golf and Country Club is the venue, and Chef has promised a New Orleans-inspired feast planned to fuel the fun. Costumes are encouraged, but not necessary. Masks and beads are provided. There will be two talented psychics giving free readings all night long. Follow Grozeal Connect, so that you may sign up and enjoy the fun. It is for a good cause, it is for the Grozeal Animal Shelter. Go to Grozeal Connect and pick up the information. The second commission that I have the pleasure of sitting on is Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. They meet on the third Thursday, this month is February 20th, at 7:30 in the Merle Solomon Room. Third commission that I have the pleasure of working with is the Grozeal Greenways Open Space Commission. Three things of note there. Dump the Junk has been tentatively scheduled for May 16th. That will be a one-day program, possibly a second in the fall, where we will have Dump the Junk tentatively, hope, plan for, after the island-wide garage sale. So if you don't get rid of it in the island-wide, feel free to bring it down there, but that is tentative. We are working on doing special pickups for mattresses and things that are large and bulky, and are expensive for us to dispose of, because only a hand fill will fit in each of those dumpsters. We are working with a new refuse hauler, and look forward to having a second Dump the Junk with the savings we're going to have for the first. And the third, second thing is, is that we have sent out, courtesy of John Meyer, 13 welcome letters in January, with another 16 to be sent in February, introducing people to the community. And finally, and very importantly, we have a meeting of the residents of the Manchester and Park Lane Intersections, where we are looking to do something with a trail on the newly purchased property. Bill Stevenson is spearheading that. We are working in collaboration with the residents and the neighbors to find a placement for a trail. It may or may not be at Park Lane in Manchester. We do have alternatives, and the citizens, neighbors there are inspired and glad to be working with us. So that is a collaborative effort. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buncher. Mr. Bundy?
Thanks, Brian. Tomorrow, DPS, we will be going over our budget for the next year, as well as picking our officers. I encourage you to come and find out what we're going to spend your money on. That's tomorrow at 7:00 in this room. We do have a ZBA this month, believe it or not. We actually have two appeals on that, and that will be Tuesday, the 25th, at 7 o'clock, again, in this room. And also in this room, on the 26th, at 6 o'clock, we have our next Q&amp;A session. So please come and attend that, and let us know what your questions are. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bundy. Anything change, Mr. Assadi? Any report tonight? Mr. Ream, manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I have a lot of scheduling to share with the board and the community this evening. Obviously, today is the 10th. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is February 24th, which we're proposing to be a budget study session. And obviously, those take many, many hours. So we were looking at not having action items. If there are other things or other timelines that come up, please communicate that to us, so we can try to coordinate. And the next scheduled meeting will be March 9th, which we would have the budget hearing and ultimately, a budget approval during that meeting. And some of you are going to be out of town the rest of the month of March, so we had scheduled that forward. Then that would put us at March 23rd. We are proposing to have a study session with the Community Recreation Commission. There's been conversations, as I mentioned at the last meeting, about the possibility of a community center. And that would be a study session specifically for that, as well as our action item.
What date was that?
That was March 23rd. And then, the following meeting would be April 13th on our schedule. The problem with that is, it's Monday after Easter. And I know, it was mentioned to me, maybe we want to combine April 13th and April 27th into one meeting in the middle of that month. So that's something that I would like your input on, at least over the next several weeks. So, but we have a lot ahead of us the next several months. It's that time of year. I know, and all the department managers have been working on the budget for the past several weeks. We're going to have our administrative meetings throughout this week, and then pull it together next week, and then have a study session. So that's, it's fun, and it's also challenging at the same time. It was mentioned earlier, we are closed the 17th of February for President's Day. And on the Thursday, February 13th, at the Trenton Community Center, the Environmental Protection Agency is having their public meeting to form the Community Advisory Group. That is set for February 13th at the Trenton Community Building, which is just north of the actual library in that same complex.
Westfield Center.
Yes. Is that the Westfield Center?
Westfield Activities Center, across from the light.
And that is it. So I hope you've marked your calendars accordingly.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Ream. All right, I'm going to try to do some of this high-tech... There we go. And put some stuff on the screens. So I'll get into my report, I'm going to try to back it up with what I have on the screen. First up, Angela couldn't be here tonight, but wanted me to give her DDA report. Said the chocolate walk was very successful. She had probably over 200 people, 20 businesses joined in. It was a good time for an otherwise uneventful day, so that, I guess that went over well. She's always cooking up new ideas. And four new businesses signed leases last month. So we expect sometime in the near future, four new, she didn't say what they were, but new businesses opening up. Let's see, so you can follow along with me. Of course, you can't open the file. All right, well, it seemed like a good idea at the time. You'll have to, you just have to bear with me. Okay, the big news, and this is hot as of about 4 o'clock this afternoon with the bridge repairs. So Beverly Watts returned my call, and the status of the Grozeal, the Parkway Bridge, it's currently, the contractor's currently being reviewed by MDOT. The contractor has been selected. When MDOT gets done with it, it gets kicked back to Wayne County for whatever they do with it, and that will be, she said, in the next two weeks. The construction of Skills is still scheduled for May. Okay, so the rumors that it's going to start in March or April, it's still scheduled to begin with May. And as of today, they're planning to do Phase 2, which is the structural repair to the bridge, the steel, the iron work, concurrently with Phase 1A, which is reinforcement of the piers. They want to get it done as we'd been petitioning, get it all done in one closure, one extended closure this summer. Get it done, and then, then we're done with it. They will be here for an open-house meeting sometime when this gets finalized, so they want to come. I don't know what kind of attendance we're going to have. We may have to have it at the high school or something. I hope we have a lot of attendance. I want, I want the answers provided from Wayne County. It's their bridge, it's county and MDOT dollars doing the work, so, again, I want people to come. I want to get straight answers, not filter-fed through me, through Mr. Bundy, or, you know, the DPS question, but right from the county. So we'll let you know when that comes to pass. And the Mesa Bridge, or East River, East River Road Bridge, as they call it, I call it the Mesa Island Bridge, because that's where it is. That contractor is mobilizing as we speak. He's kind of concerned with the weather. He doesn't want to get started and have the waterway ice up on him, so we're waiting to see when he's going to start. That will be soon. Those of you who have been driving slowly over the bridge to preserve it, thank you very much. And hopefully, that will not be an issue much longer when the work gets started on that. Other, other things going on, March border review. Okay, this is stuff that, under my purview. The March border review is where you can petition for a change in your property tax value. Most of you will be petitioning to have it lowered, I would assume. This is from, on March 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And March 10th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We've had very few participants, very few petitions in the last couple of years, mostly because our assessments are pretty accurate. This, you can also, you don't have to be there in person, we've authorized you to do a mail-in petition, so, you know, that option is open to you if you can't make it there in person. Okay, we did bring up Marty Paws, and by golly, something's going to work here. See, if I were doing this, it'd be done in a second, but I'm just a little bit slower. So we're going to... How am I doing, Brian? And then, I think that takes it out to full screen. Oh, look at that. So there's, there's all the data you want, and we'll get this, I'll get Brian to put on the website and on the app, so if you need to refer to it, you'll have it. Commission committee chairs, commissions and committees, get your nominations for your chairs to Margie, if you haven't done it already, as soon as possible, because we will be approving those in the second meeting in March, as we round out our fiscal year and make plans to begin our next fiscal year, begins the 1st of April. Spoke with, it's good to have friends. I spoke with one of my contacts, the Corps of Engineers. We are going to be picking up some more sandbags fairly soon. They're anticipating high water again, maybe even higher water this year. So if you were real close last year, you may want to take a real close look at it this year. We will have as many sandbags as we can haul in my F-150 or somebody's fairly soon. We'll work on getting Phil Dirt and a location for all this to happen. It's not immediate concern, but I want to get this rolling. And again, if you were close last year, you might want to look at getting some bags this year. We'll tell you more about that when we actually get the bags in place. My next topic, I'm going to just go into, I'll leave Marty Paws up there, because that's good news, but what I'm going to refer to is irresponsible journalism, because every time Karen Drew comes with that click-on for Channel 4, talking about the contaminated spill into the Detroit River, except it wasn't contaminated, it was gravel. And it's been tested by the EPA, it's been tested by Eagle, it's been tested by the FBI. It's not contaminated. I sent her an email. Why do you keep saying it's contaminated? You know the reports say it isn't contaminated. The next newscast, it came out, it was the confirmed contaminated soil. So it's irresponsible journalism, it causes a lot of anguish. We got the test results from Great Lakes Water Authority, we ran our own tests, just to verify them. Both came in clean. As Brian Kelly said, it did not meet drinking water standards. Can I say, "Well, duh"? It's river, it's water that was coming right out of the Detroit River they tested, it doesn't meet drinking water. meet drinking water standards, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's contaminated. On the radionuclides, it was at ambient. So it did not exceed background levels. So the reports of radiation were inaccurate. There was no radiation on the site. There was no radiation in the water on the scene. There was no radiation in the water as tested by Great Lakes Water and by Grosse Seal Township. I just wish they would show some responsibility rather than stirring up controversy and fear-mongering. Maybe that's what sells advertising. But anyway, we're the ones ultimately responsible. We ran our tests. We got the Great Lakes Water Authority test. There are no radionuclides present. It meets all drinking water standards when it comes to your tap, which will get us to the lead copper rules, but that's coming up in the fairly near future. We did mention the environmental town hall, and I got a flyer on that. Which is going to bring me to another topic, because I look into this stuff. That's who's going to be, that's where it's going to be, when it's going to be, again in Trenton, at the Westfield Center. And here's who's going to be there. Liesl Clark is Michigan for Eagle, EPA, state legislator, local mayors, township supervisors, i.e. me, and friends of the Detroit River, other experts. So come in to hear what she has to say. It'll get me into my next topic, which was the PFAS, which she is saying it's a known carcinogen. Well, no, it's not. Okay, so I did the research, so you don't have to, into the National Institute for Environmental Health Studies. And it lists a lot of things that PFAS is, but a carcinogen, a known carcinogen is not at this time one of them. And I'll read their cited concerns. And you can find this stuff yourself. Okay, so National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, PFAS, what we've learned. Adverse health outcomes. Okay, these include potential effects on metabolism, pregnancy, children's cognition, and neurobehavior development, and the immune system. It's not good for you, but it's not a known carcinogen. Don't say it's something that it isn't. And as they're finding, it does last for a long time. It may bioaccumulate. It doesn't go out of the body as rapidly as the body tends to store it. It is the fluorine and carbon bond, which is a very strong chemical bond that makes it a, what they call a forever chemical, that bond does not like to break. So now you know more than you did when you came in here. But anyway, it's not a known carcinogen. It's not good for you. And I wish people would do a little research before they start going on talks. All right, EPA, as Dale brought up, the EPA is also holding their next community advisory group. I will outsmart this thing at some point. Oh, where is that? It's not there. Doesn't matter. At the same, Westfield Center on the 13th, the community advisory group. We have our nominee, I guess I can name him, Russ Boudry. We discussed having a, representing the township government itself. Russ Boudry was volunteered, he did volunteer. He is an expert on hazardous material. He's an expert on construction. He's the right guy for the job. And that will eliminate the fear that some had. We don't want elected officials here, but we want an expert. Russ is the expert. Thanks for stepping up, Russ. Hopefully, you won't regret it. And it's brought up budget preparation this week. Our budget is our plan going forward for the following year, so it's important that we get it right, or as right as we can, because those are the dollars we set aside to do the things that we want to do. So that is our action plan for the various departments for next year. It's going to be, I mean, our budgets are always tight. We don't collect any more tax dollars than we absolutely have to. Nobody, we're certainly not banking a whole lot. We're not spending it frivolously, so I think we're doing a great job. And we haven't cut any services. Sometimes we're not as fast as we used to be, but we maintain our level of service. You've been generous with your millages. I think we've spent the money wisely. That concludes my report. So let me get this off here, which I failed miserably at again. But I would, Mr. Nelson? Oh, I'm sorry. It is at, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And I think they stick pretty close to that timetable, so they'll be, that's for your chance to get your inputs to the community advisory group, which will have an impact on how eventually the McCloud site is rehabilitated, repurposed, whatever. Again, that concludes my report. With that, I think we go to?
Discussion items.
Discussion items. So with that, yeah, discussion item time. We moved the action item, and it concerns, basically, I'm going to say the overarching consider is paying commissioners, committee members for meeting attendance. Where do we want to, why do we want to start with this? The ordinance in question began with the Public Service Commission. And we, up until, I guess it's 2005, we had a Public Works Board, or which, and up until, again, about 2005, and the legislation and the ordinance said, "The members of the Public Works Board should be paid reasonable compensation for attendance at meetings of the board and shall be reimbursed for unnecessary expenses incurred in behalf of the township. Their compensation shall be established by the township board and their expenses subject to its approval." That was since modified when they melded the Public Works, the, they call it what?
Roads.
Roads Study, Road Commission, Road.
Roads Committee.
Roads Committee. And there was one other one. They melded three together.
Works.
Public Works, Roads, and, was it Drainage Task Force? There it is. Okay. So the motion was to amend the municipal code by adding Article 12, establishing the Public Services Commission and disbanding the former Public Works Commission. Road Committee and Drainage Task Force and a roll call vote. It was, it carried unanimously. So.
That was 2005.
That was in 2005, correct. And that code was changed to say that the members will serve without compensation. But they've been compensated all along, until it was pointed out that why are these members being compensated and other commission committees are not being compensated? So I did a, just a real, and these are really rough numbers, but essentially, if you add up all of our commissions and committees, we have 111 members. Some are township staff, some are elected officials that serve as liaisons. I just took the ordinance number of members. It came out to 111. And the very rough numbers, if we paid everyone $25 a meeting, 111 members times 12 meetings per year, times $25 a meeting, came to over $33,000, some of which would come from DPS budgets, some would come from the airport budget, some would come from fire budget, but the bulk would be coming from the general fund, which, as we know, is on a real tight budget anyway. Estimated for discussion purpose only, I think what this board needs to discuss, and I'll let Mr. Bundy take the lead because he proposed the action item, as to where do we want to go? Do we want to compensate all of our commission committee members? Do we want to compensate none of them? Do we want to ensure that they're, we do want to ensure that any expenses they incur are covered. You know, you're giving your time. You shouldn't have to give up your gasoline and, you know, your time away from home and buying lunches when you're out on the road working on these events. So we certainly intend to cover expenses, but to compensate, I don't know, some of these, of the numerous commissions and committees, by statute, we have to have a border review. We have to have the Brownfield Authority because we take Brownfield money. We have to have a planning commission because we're zoned. And because we're zoned, we have to have a zoning board of appeals, but the other commissions and committees are all at the township's discretion. We can form or disband them as the board of trustees feels fit. But we have, I don't even count the number of commissions and committees, there's a bunch. Again, 111 township people working on, most of whom are volunteers. With that, Mr. Bundy?
Well, yes. Mine was merely, was brought up to us by a resident, that Section 67 said no, no compensation. And looking into it, I found 197, which provided for compensation for the old Public Works Looking into it further, found out that the 2005, they, you know, is when it changed, when they put the commissions under Section 67. And they have it, you know, if you go to that section, you go to each commission, it has each commission, and it has various verbiage, some being paid, some not being paid. The Public Service Commission, or the Public Works Board before that, has been paid. Tried to find out when it started, how it started, what the history, and it's been paid for so long, there is none. And there's nobody that could give me any information on it, but it's been, I know myself, as far back as the 80s, it was being paid. And it has continued on. And after the board passed on the 2005, it continued to be paid. So there, to me, it was, okay, we have what's actually happening versus what's said. It needs to be amended one way or another. I talked to the DPS department and, you know, to see if there was any problem with it. It's paid out of their budget. They had none with that, and I went ahead with the amendment to change the language to them being paid. It was brought up, well, what about all these other commissions? It'd be my feeling that those commissions who have, who have an actual budget, because not all of them do, that could pay it, if, that'd be something that that commission needs to determine if what they're doing needs, you know, their people need to be paid. Now, on the DPS, it, I've been told, and I'm sitting on the DPS, I know it's true, our members don't just sit and go to a meeting. They're out looking at projects. They look at road projects. They look at drainage projects. They look at water, the wastewater treatment plant. They go and view these things. They check them out. So to me, to me, those commissioners are doing more than just attending a meeting. So, and it's, you know, they're not getting paid that much. I myself think that they, you know, that it's fine and that they should continue on. I won't speak, and I don't think, you know, anybody can without talking to the commission itself first, any of these other commissions, whether they would be in the same position. And I think that's what needs to be done. Turn it over to the commission. If they have the availability to make a payment, and they want to, with some reason behind it, other than we just have people and you're getting it so we should get it, that's not a reason, you know, then they should come forth with that reasoning. That's where I stand on this.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I understand where you're coming from, Jim, and I appreciate that you've brought this forward, but I would respectfully disagree. I do not think it is up to the commissions to tell us whether or not they should be paid. I think it's a board decision, a board policy decision, whether or not any commission or commissioner should be paid. Two, I think that, I agree with you that it's not, well, everyone's getting, they're getting paid, so I should get paid. But the board should establish a set of criteria by which we decide which commissions merit a payment per meeting. I'd like to know from the township attorney, for instance, what are the criteria for paying commissioners? We know that some commissions have to meet, or we have to have the commissions by statutory law, but are they also required to be paid? So, you know, I want, before I make a decision here, I'd like to have some definitive answers.
We're not making a decision. We're only discussing this. And I never said that the commissions would tell us. Like everything a commission does, it brings it to the board, and it's what they think. And then we decide what we're going to do. They're not deciding for us, so.
So to go further, I would also like to say that in addition to discussing whether or not a certain group of commissions should be paid per meeting, I think at the same time that we open this door, we need to also discuss whether or not the liaisons that sit on those commissions should receive extra pay. Right now, all trustees get a stipend for serving on the board. I don't mean to single you out, Jim, but you're the only trustee who also gets a per payment, per meeting payment for the DPS. I know, to me, that seems to set up a two-tier system among, not just the trustees here, but among the commissioners who are serving. We have a lot of expertise, a lot of experience, a lot of educated people serving on our commissions. All of their time is valuable. All of them go places beyond just the meetings they attend. And so I would hate for people to think, well, my service is not as rewarded or as desirable because this, the board is not choosing to compensate commissioners on this commission. So I would like to actually suggest that we're not going to hash a lot of this out tonight, but that we plan a study session that you can arrange with Dale and with Mr. Assorti and Supervisor Loftus that can help answer some of these questions before we kind of bring this forward again.
That's fine. I mean, there's nothing wrong with discussion and hearing different views on anything.
What's on the elbow now and on your overhead monitors is the list of the commission committees that I could find either through resolution or through ordinance. And then, again, the four that are required by statute. The rest are, because we're a general law township, we run the township the way we see fit, and we do it by establishing these commissions to do the heavy lifting. And I've pointed out a number of times, the DPS commission does a lot of work, but then we get, but then, as do the other ones, as do all the commissions. We just see the results with DPS.
Yeah. And then, well, I mean, you know, police is different than DPS, which is different than fire, which is different than open space. They're all different. And there's no, there's no, like, right or wrong to it, or I do more than you. It's I do what I do, because that's what the commission needs. So you can't go by, you know, that's not a, that's not a way to look at it. But yeah, I know, I mean, yeah, there's nothing wrong with having more discussion on it.
Which are the committees that currently get a per-meeting fee, Dale? Can you answer that definitively?
Yes. DPS, Planning Commission, Zoning Board, and I believe that's it.
Airport doesn't get?
No.
And in 67, it says they're supposed to get paid, so it's just another glitch in the wording.
And I guess one thing I'd like to say, when the ordinance was amended, there was no discussion on what was being amended, pay, no pay. I don't even believe that was of concern. I think it was a codification issue that just, it was never realized that these sections, I guess, were in conflict. So the fact that we're aware of it, we have to figure out what to do with it.
Well, and the example that you gave us in our packets on paragraph 6761, it's actually hand-crossed out.
Well, that's what, because I was, I put that together to show what, yeah, I was showing what we were going, what we were changing.
Okay.
Yeah, that is not your code. That's what I put together.
So that was my question, because it looked like it was handwritten. But again, it was, it's a matter of the timing as well, and I know that you and Mr. Bletcher have been working on coordinating and re-unifying the codes and the policies and things.
Just the policies, not the codes. We haven't been working on the codes. We're just working on the policies.
It's a minor thing, Mr. Bundy. You've been working on the policies, so I think it's, makes sense that you're also looking at the codes and trying to make sure that everything is consistent. It's very hard to pay you a compliment, apparently, but I'm trying to say.
No, 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 I just want you to be accurate.
I'm glad that you're doing that.
Yes.
But, at the same time...
Thank you, thank you.
It's opened, it's opened up the door to these questions, and we all represent a large number of other commissions and commissioners. We've just had a lot of conversation in the, in the recent past about the service of commissioners. They serve at the pleasure of the board, but yet, we always do acknowledge, they do heavy lifting for us, but, again, they're not elected, we're elected, they are appointed to, to help, so it's nice that you would be able to compensate them for their time or with a token compensation. But then, as Supervisor Loftus points out, when you start putting those numbers together, you come up with a pretty hefty number, how, you know, what are the criteria then that you would use? So, I think we can come up with a structure for answering these questions, for becoming consistent, but, and then, of course, on top of all that, where do we then, as trustees, fit in on the commissions? As a planning commissioner or liaison to the planning commissioner, I've never received the monthly meeting fee when we've had one. Signing the checks, I don't recall Mr. Van Oost getting a monthly meeting fee for DPS.
I did when I was chair, when I was the acting chair of the DPS, I did.
Yeah, but not as, not as a board liaison.
Once I became liaison, I didn't take them.
Not as a board liaison. So, I understand that a chair would get the, get the payment, that a commission member would get the payment, but we, as trustees, are already being compensated by our stipend, so I would like to see that clarified in this language as well.
And it is, it's, and I, I can't think of what, and I'm not sure whether it was MTA or what, what it was, but trustees were supposed to be paid, but not officers. Officers were not supposed to be paid if they served on a commission that, that had a payment, but trustees were supposed to. And I'll dig that out, I'll dig that out, I mean, we'll have that for our discussion.
Okay, so you can see on the Elmo, the, the commissions I cleaned, put together, again, the four of them are required by state statute. Mrs. Akon brought up, you know, the policies and procedures have to be in line with, with our ordinances, and both of those have to align with state statutes. We don't really go into federal law too much, but there's a lot of Michigan law that determines what our ordinance can be, and from there, what our, what our policies and procedures need to be. Nothing happens in a vacuum. Any other comments on this, or we know what we don't know, Mr. Treasure?
Just to make a comment, I, I guess it's, it's our job to make a decision about compensation, other than the statutory, I wouldn't have, I have no problem at all paying statutory commission members, because we have to have them, it's required. I don't think that any commission member, be it the DPS, airport, police, does look for the pay. I don't think any one would make a difference to them one way or the other. They're devoting their time, they're devoting their effort, they're working their rear ends off to help us, the board. I mean, because without them, we got to do all that. I mean, and excuse me, I don't know, at that time, I want more money. So, that, if that's the case, I mean, if that's a logical assumption, then maybe we should be compensating them for something, but that's just a personal opinion. I don't think we're going to get that answer tonight. I think it's a valid question to ask, and I think was a valid issue to be brought up, but I know for a fact, the residents of this island that are members of the commissions and the committees do not do it for the pay. They're here serving the community, and for that, we owe them our gratitude, and I personally get many, many more hours of sleep at night, that I don't have to worry about making all those decisions because they bring me the data and the details, so. With that, I think we probably should table this to a study session and make whatever decision we have to make. But, trust me, I don't think it'll have any impact on the boards or the commissions. I think they'll operate the same, whether we're giving them free ice cream for a week or not, so. I mean, the money is, the money is really trivial. Even if we paid them all and came up with a budget item of $33,000, that's not great compensation for what they do. I mean, I don't know if people, I've always been a huge believer that this system goes away when the commissions and the committees are gone, because seven people on this board cannot do the work for this community that those commissions and commissions do. They're so vital and so important to what happens to this, the operation of this township. I mean, we just, we wouldn't have the time to do that. We would end up having to pay people to do that, we'd have to pay staff to do that, and that staff couldn't handle it with their current loads, so. I just want people to understand that this is not a trivial thing, it's a procedural thing. We'll get through this, and I'm sure we'll get through it correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Treasure. Mr. Bletcher?
Thank you, Brian. Utah, you indicated that Jim and I and Dale have been working on policies and procedures. That has been ongoing, it has been a tremendously complicated and time-consuming task, and I take pride in the fact that I and Jim and Dale have been working on that together. Dale gets paid for it, Jim and I do not. I do not, however, feel that this is a question of whether one commission or one group works harder or has more work to do than other commissions. I have a police commission meeting tomorrow, and I have to look at Paul Anderson, who's been on that commission for 28 years, and say, "Paul, I can't explain to you why you don't get paid something in recognition for your time and services." I have the same question that comes up next Thursday, a week from Thursday, with Brian Pollack, who has spent countless hours on bicycle pedestrian advisory commission. I look at Cliff St. Pierre, who's been 10 years the chair, and longer, on greenways and open space, and look him in the eye and say, "Cliff, thank you for your time, but we're going to treat others differently." I have to look at Ron Moran, who's done a terrific job with the airport, and say the same thing to Ron, "Sorry, thank you for your work." And the same thing with Jerry Bringard, who is the chair of the fire commission. I get a chance to look at all those people in the eye and say, "Gee whiz, I'm sorry." But, one man I can look in the eye tonight is Chad Novak, who sits at the back of this room, and Chad has worked longer and harder and has more hours in festival commission and similar commitment to the rec. commission, and I am not going to look Chad in the eye and say, "Mr. Novak, thank you, but you're not getting a penny, because I don't think you deserve it." I would love to see everybody receive something, but that is not what township service is about. And, Mr. Novak, I'm not going to ask you to continue to do something for free and at the same time, support other people in commissions that are getting paid. I just don't think it's fair. I think we have to have uniform respect for all of our volunteers. I don't believe that similarly situated individuals should be treated differently, and I could not support something like that.
We're not voting on this.
We're not voting on it, and...
But you've got a long ways to convince me, Jim, on that.
Apparently. Closing, I think we're, we know that we need to know more.
Yeah, exactly.
Closing comments? With that, we'll open up to public comment, since we may have kicked something over, but... Mrs. Walker?
First off, Happy Valentine's Day coming up. We all need some Valentines. Anyways, it's the eighth year for Week Kayak coming up, and I, and we're hoping that there isn't high water, because Lake Superior has not frozen, so keep that, keep your fingers crossed. But, we're having a party, we have one every year, everyone is invited, it's free, it's March 24th. We will have a theme very soon, but it'll be at RKC, 6 o'clock as always, we'll have food, we'll have a nice little evening to talk about kayaking and how we miss it. Secondly, I'd like to request that we have, I know we're, we're doing more and more televised meetings, and I'd like to see the ADA televised. I think there'd be a lot of really good comments that we want to hear, the public wants to hear, so I want to suggest that. And lastly, I'd like to thank Russ Bowdre. Out of all the meetings I've heard, been to, participated in, what you said tonight was more valuable than anything I've heard in 20 years, plus years I've lived here. You might have saved a life tonight, and I thank you for that. And I wrote copious notes, and I'm going to check on things when I get home, and thank you again.
I appreciate it.
But, again, those are my three things, and I really look forward to seeing the ADA televised. Thank you.
I think, I think she means the DDA.
DDA, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
They could be ADA.
Yeah.
impeachment later.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Mr. Howell?
I'm Bill Heil, I live on East River. I think there's a thread of thought in here that brings this all together. Brian, you commented, for example, that the idea of someone is traveling about or doing something, they might cover some expense for gasoline or a lunch. I think there's some merit to that thought to a degree. You can show up at a meeting, it's nothing to drive a mile or two. Dale, you had mentioned that with time, a decision had made here, and another decision was made somewhere else, and suddenly, with the passage of time, we saw things were out of sync, or could be amended to be more fair or appropriate. And I think, keeping that thought in mind, it says that something, no one intended it to be this way, it just with time worked out the way it was. And that sort of cools the things down, and it says, "Let's, let's review it and talk about it and do what's appropriate." And Ted, I think, made an honest, solid contribution with the thought that, you know, if it's $25 or whatever, nobody's in this community is going to worry about whether he receives that compensation or not. In my personal experience, there was a time when I was hauling styrofoam, or the trash wasn't picking it up, I ran it out to a dump in Ann Arbor. Barry Sedlock and I sat down, and he wanted to offer me some money for gasoline, and I didn't want the money, and he let me go for a while, he came back and it was bothering him, and he arm wrestled me down to accept him. I think it was $25 in all honesty, I was about it, I got 10 miles a gallon, and when I got there and back, I'd burned up that much fuel at whatever the price was, and so I was compensated for, for the fuel. Not my time or a lunch if I ate one, but if you have to go out and go to a seminar and it's 50 miles away, or you have to go out and do some research on a home and other, I don't know, but you can decide what, what fair is, and it will vary with the commission. I mean, if you're talking about people who are doing the zoning stuff, they only meet a few times a year, don't they? It's nothing like...
There's an appeal, only when there's an appeal.
Okay, so now, if there's no appeals, it's different than the police that meet every, every month. You guys can work that out, is what I'm saying, if you keep those thoughts in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heil.
Nobody hiding behind it?
Mr. Snyder?
Tom Snyder, Rucker Road. I appreciate all of the discussion this evening, I also appreciate that this is, this discussion item is going to be going to, not a closed session, but necessarily, but a study session in order to get this done. One of the reasons I brought this up is we have 17 commissions, and four of these commissions are the ones that reimburse, because I believe, Dale, you had mentioned three, but I think you had forgot, is it the municipal ordinance committee that doesn't meet very often, but they were, they were compensated, and at this point in time, I'm sure in the future, they'll be compensated if and when they meet again. So, I encourage that all of you, look at what, what your decision will do. My concern is, is, are people going to volunteer for the ones that are only compensated, or are they going to rebel for the other ones? I think that over the, over the long haul, I believe this decision and the idea of altering what needs to be done with these decisions can have effect on this, so if we don't treat everybody as if they're important, I'm worried that the committees may go away. So, I think that's something I'd like to see you guys keep in the back of your mind. Thanks.
Mr. Snyder? Other comments from the public present? Okay, I didn't set a record, but, Mr. Budney?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll, we'll consider the meeting adjourned at 8:58. Thanks for coming, everyone, over a minute, over a minute, while, and probably 50 still listening at home, thanks for, thanks for listening in.